All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get the meeting started. And what I want to do is start with introductions like we always do. Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon. I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I am Marlese Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell, and I'm honored to be elected by the people of District 6.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District 5.
Good afternoon. Lee Altman, County Commissioner, Serving at Large, and I also have the privilege of serving as Vice Chair.
Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. My name is Mark Jarrell. Been elected by the people of District 4 and have the honor of serving as Chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Doc... Oh, back to... My name is Vilma De Leeck, and I represent the most powerful district in the county. That's District 2. Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Arthur Griffin. I have the pleasure of serving Mecklenburg County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell, serving the northernmost district in the county. Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, also known as Commissioner YTI, and I serve you on the County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon. Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Good afternoon and welcome. Mike Bryan, Mecklenburg County Manager.
Executive Team.
Dr. Kim Campbell, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon. Leslie Johnson, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon. Michelle Atreid, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon. Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager and Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon, David Cox, County Pledge of Director.
Good afternoon, Michael Rizal, Director of Strategy and Innovation.
Dr. Penn? Everybody?
Katrin Penn, Director of Child, Family, and Health Services.
Who is the young lady?
Please.
The Rainford Division Director for Conical and Contractual Services.
Rodney McGill, Concerned Citizens.
Welcome, sir. Andy Zach, can you say hello? Thank you.
Dr. Melissa Seager is the County Director. Hey, Andy, may I have definitely hold your information for a second?
All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Before I turn it over to the manager to tee us up for today, a couple of things. I want to say thank you, everybody, for being so flexible with the time. Obviously, this isn't our normal time. There was a disruption to one of our committees, and I certainly apologize for that. We wanted to do our best to accommodate our CMS colleagues, and there was a need for them to... for us to switch to accommodate them, and there were no additional rooms available. And so I just want to say I appreciate the flexibility and apologies to the Environmental Stewardship Committee for having to cancel that meeting. The next thing I want to do is, as you all know, before every meeting, we make sure that the community understands what our mission, our vision, and our priorities are. And so our mission, again, is to serve Mecklenburg County residents by helping improve their lives and community. Our vision is Mecklenburg County will be a community of pride and choice for people to live, learn, work, and recreate. And our FY 2627 board budget priorities are economic development, education, environmental stewardship, health equity and wellness, services for seniors, workforce development, and reducing racial disparities. And it's important for us to continue to tee those things up, those items up, to... for not only visibility for the community, but also to help guide our discussions as we move forward. So I wanted to do that. And the last item today, we get to say happy birthday to one of our colleagues. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, I just wanted to say publicly happy birthday. Thank you so much for being here. Most of us would have taken the day off, but you did not. Or actually, this crowd would not have taken the day off, so you're right into the tradition. So I do want to lift you up and say happy birthday and welcome to the 21 Club.
Thank you very much.
Finally, finally, you made it. And with that being said, I will turn it over to the County Manager now to tee us up for the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and happy birthday, Commissioner SRM. You have two items on your agenda this afternoon. The first item is actually aligned to your health equity and wellness priority, and it is to receive an update from Dr. Penn. Dr. Penn is going to provide you a status update on our behavioral health strategic plan. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask that you recognize Dr. Penn, please.
Dr. Penn, you are recognized.
All right. Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Board Chair Jarrell, Vice Chair Altman, Board Members, County Manager, and Staff. I'm Katrine Penn, and I'm pleased to discuss behavioral health in Mecklenburg County today. So, uh-oh. There we go. This is a quick clicker. All right. So objectives for today. The first thing that we will seek to do is to level set on behavioral health as a board priority to ensure shared understanding. Next, we'll review local data and information about insurance status. And then finally, I'll provide an overview of our implementation plan for the behavioral health strategic plan. All right. So a level set on behavioral health. And I think this is a really important starting place because we do talk about behavioral health quite a bit, but it's important to ensure that we are all talking about the same thing when we're talking about behavioral health. So often, we'll use the term mental health and behavioral health interchangeably, but it is important to note that there is a difference between the two. Mental health is focused on well-being and treatment of conditions that impact psychological well-being, but behavioral health is a broader umbrella term. And I want to note that we have a behavioral health strategic plan, not a mental health strategic plan. Behavioral health includes not only mental health, but also behaviors, actions, and habits that impact well-being and outcomes, including social determinants of health. And in addition to mental health and substance use, in North Carolina, and it's important to note, in North Carolina and about four other states, the term behavioral health also includes intellectual and developmental disabilities as well as traumatic brain injury. And we'll see why that's important when we get to the section where we're talking about insurance. So let's talk now about stakeholders and their unique roles. North Carolina has been reforming its behavioral healthcare system since about 2001, and it's resulted in significant changes among stakeholders and their roles. And keeping up with these shifts has been challenging, to say the least. And so this discussion is going to focus on the current state. We won't spend time on how we got here because I have 20 minutes. Sorry. There we go. All right. So as of mid-November, 347,152 Mecklenburg County residents have Medicaid. That's roughly 28% of our county's 2025 population. When we think about Medicaid as a county, we often think about Alliance Health Plan. That is the partner that we most often talk about, work with when we're thinking about Medicaid. But eight out of 10 residents in our county who have Medicaid are not insured by Alliance. This is a shift that happened as part of Medicaid transformation in 2021. So there are five Medicaid standard plan providers across the state, and that's who serves about 80% of folks in Mecklenburg County who have Medicaid. These standard plans, for the most part, are private insurance companies. Blue Cross Blue Shield is one of them. United Healthcare is one of them. But they've gotten into the business of providing Medicaid insurance plans for residents who have typical physical and mental health needs. It's important to note, however, that these plans typically only cover basic behavioral health services, but they do also cover wellness and prevention services, things like gym memberships, weight loss support. And there are also numerous examples of standard plan providers making social determinant of health-related funding contributions to county-based organizations. So that's an important thing to note, given that these are the providers that serve 80% of our Medicaid population. Now, to move from one of these basic Medicaid plans to Alliance, which serves constituents who've got more significant mental health and intellectual developmental disabilities and traumatic brain injury, a resident has to have received a... has to have or have received a diagnosis or have to meet one of these criteria that you hear on this... that you see there on this screen. So residents with this level of need that place them on an Alliance plan represent, again, only about 20% of our population. So really, there are six players in the Medicaid game in Mecklenburg County and in every county in North Carolina, five of the standard plans, and then that one tailored plan provider, which for us is Alliance. So this matters because while Alliance is the insurance provider for only about 20% of our Medicaid population, if it feels like they have an outsized role or greater importance, it's because in addition to serving Medicaid recipients with the greatest behavioral health needs, they also are charged with administering state and federal block grant funding for non-Medicaid residents who have unmet behavioral health needs. So this is primarily going to be folks who are uninsured or, in some cases, folks who have private insurance, but the insurance does not cover certain medical or mental health needs that they have. Alongside that, folks have to meet particular income criteria. So it's a bit of a gauntlet to get through funding for services if you are uninsured or underinsured. But they're administering that block grant funding. And then they also provide crisis services. Most of us have probably heard of Mobile Crisis. That is an Alliance-funded service that any member of the community can access. They also receive some county funding to provide services for folks with behavioral health and ADD needs. For example, we allocate funding annually to Alliance to support the Steve Smith BHUC, Behavioral Health Urgent Care. So that's an example of where funding is being braided with insurance reimbursement, Alliance funding, and funding from Mecklenburg County. And then finally, like all MCOs or managed care organizations, Alliance is required to reinvest any excess profits that they make in the communities that they serve. Now, I did ask a colleague from Alliance yesterday, "Do you have to reinvest your profits made in Mecklenburg back in Mecklenburg?" No. It's a big bucket, and they can spend it on anything within their catchment. And they serve five different counties. So let's talk about the state of North Carolina, and I'm going to expand a little bit on what I have here. So the role of the state of North Carolina when it comes to behavioral health is to administer those state and federal funds. So they are the ones sending funding from the federal government to managed care organizations like Alliance or the other standard Medicaid plans. They are also the ones who are ultimately administering the block grant funding, whether it be to the managed care organizations or issuing grants that different organizations can apply to. They also set policy and regulation, issue grants for other funding sources. They're responsible for innovative program development. They provide a limited array of services as well. For example, there are... They run state psychiatric hospitals. Here, I'm really talking about HHS at the state level, but I also think it's important that we talk about the role of the legislature. And that's going to come up some as well when we talk about... where we talk about the current context. But one thing to note is Medicaid funding and maybe even more importantly, Medicaid reimbursement rates. That is a governmental role where the lawmakers of the state of North Carolina decide how much we pay for services. And so that's something that's really important to note as we go further down the road to talk about what the current state is in North Carolina for behavioral health. Finally, the role of the county. So given that the state is allocating funding to the managed care organizations, but they're not... You did not hear me say the state is allocating behavioral health funding to the counties. They are not. Behavioral health funding does not run from the state to the county, except in the scenario where there's a competitive grant that county departments or divisions may be eligible to apply for. There is no automatic funding from the state to counties for behavioral health. It's important to know that because that is one of the changes that has happened with Medicaid reform in the state of North Carolina. And so where we find ourselves is in a position to... where we can use local dollars to provide safety net services for our residents. Some examples include creating access to care for undocumented residents. I call that out specifically because when Mecklenburg County administered Medicaid funds and state funds specifically, we did make those accessible to undocumented residents. Under current practice, undocumented residents cannot access state-funded services. So if they are to be accessed, it's either because the vendor is providing them at low cost or because the county is making those services accessible. We also fund services that are not readily available or not eligible for insurance reimbursement. Some examples of those include services for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. There's a 15- to 20-year waitlist to get access to some services for folks who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. So we provide some support to open access to those programs. So as the body charged with enhancing the lives of residents, the county collaborates with behavioral health stakeholders like the managed care organizations to identify and determine how to address the needs of our residents. And then finally, in the role that we play, it's critical that we act as convener-in-chief in the development and maintenance of a coordinated system of support for our community. So let's talk about the local behavioral health landscape from a very high level. So what we have in Mecklenburg County right now? We do have a strong local service array ranging from prevention all the way to inpatient care. We have a community that is eager to collaborate in making improvements to system challenges. The fact that the strategic plan exists tells you that we've got a lot of partners who really care about the work that's being done there. Matter of fact, I think I just saw a partner walk in. A Center for Prevention Services and the Alianza team have been emailing me for weeks about when we were going to do this presentation because they are very invested in us launching the implementation of this plan. And finally, the other thing that we have that is very important is the behavioral health strategic plan. And for those of you who've been here for a while, there were probably 30 or so community organizations and entities who came to the table to weigh in on what is needed in order to strengthen the system of support for our community. So we've got that plan. Now, some things that we need. So we need increased use of prevention and early intervention behavioral health services. In part, I know that we need that. We've got data that shows that our ERs and our jails are the point of entry for behavioral health care for too many people. So we need to increase the use of prevention and early intervention services. And along with that, we need access to timely, more comprehensive service utilization data. We also need residents to know... We need to know what residents know about the available prevention and early intervention services. Are folks showing up at the ED as their first stop because they didn't know that there was free outpatient therapy available? Or what are the things... What are the barriers that are keeping folks from using those resources to a greater extent? And then amongst the other things we need to know is we need to know more about the behavioral health needs of aging adults. As an aging community, we need to better understand what those needs are and how well our current network is positioned to meet those needs. All right. And so our path to improvement, how do we get here? How do we get to all of those things I just outlined? Implementation of our behavioral health strategic plan. So in service of capitalizing on our current strengths and addressing the needs and the unknowns, we are now prepared to begin implementation of the county's behavioral health strategic plan. And the plan itself outlines five different areas of need or areas of focus, and those are collaborative and coordinated care, social determinants of health, prevention and early intervention, access to care, and service array. The plan was developed with the goal of creating a community where... Oops, sorry, y'all. We're all... Hold on, y'all. I'm off a little bit. All right. So the implementation plan will be a success if we accomplish the objectives here. We would like to see a decline in completed suicide rates, a decline in rates of suicide attempts and suicidal behavior, overall reduction in mental health emergency department visits, reduction in overdose deaths, and outpatient service utilization increases for targeted populations. So for implementation, due to the breadth of the plan, the plan has 67 action steps across five different areas. Between the breadth of the plan and a need to be conservative with both the cost of implementation and the manpower demands, the plan will be implemented in eight phases. We would begin formal implementation in quarter three of this year, with each phase running for approximately 12 months. And within each phase, there would be two primary work streams. One would be led by a team of staff from various stakeholder organizations, which I'll show you in a moment, and one would be led by a vendor with specialized expertise. This is an implementation timeline. I'm not going to read this to you, but you'll see that Phase 1 focuses on prevention and early intervention, an implementation roadmap, and a public awareness campaign. And then, again, each of the phases has a shifting focus from Phase 1 through to Phase 8. In order to implement a plan of this nature that has a lot of moving parts, we've got to be really tight and organized in the structure for implementation. And so there's four primary implementation structures. The first and the most critical is the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan Implementation Leadership Team, or the BILT. And so the BILT, that is going to be typically executive-level leaders from key stakeholder organizations that have the expertise and the positioning to be able to move this plan forward. We'll then have action teams, which will be comprised of members who have action-step-aligned expertise. So, for example, if we're focused on prevention and early intervention, we need the school system at the table. That's really where they sit in the behavioral health space. School... Support personnel and teams, those are folks who've got non-behavioral health content expertise. So, for example, we will need some data folks. We will need folks who can help us with some technology-related items, for example. And then finally, we'll have our implementation support vendors, and those will be activated in phases, the first two, which I will talk about in just a moment. These are some of the partners that have already agreed to serve on the implementation leadership team, and they would also provide staff to sit on some of the action teams based on whatever we're focused on at that point in time. And again, this is just a sampling. We actually have probably about 40 different organizations or departments that will collaborate over the life of plan implementation. All right. And then there's one additional player that was unanticipated at the time that the plan was developed, and that is the implementation backdrop of the unprecedented state and federal uncertainty around health insurance accessibility. This was not what we were talking about in 2021 and 2022 when this plan was first developed. So the first thing is a state factor, and that is you've heard me talk about needing to increase our Medicaid reimbursement rates. But in fact, starting October 1 of this year, many behavioral health service reimbursement rates were reduced anywhere between 3% and 10%. And so what we are watching to see, and that we being the insurance, the Medicaid insurance companies, as well as folks like us, we're looking to see what the implications are of those rate reductions. Will it mean that more providers opt not to serve folks with Medicaid because of the lowered reimbursement rate? We don't know the answer to that yet. That's a... Alliance and I have been talking about that. Are we seeing it being harder for kids to get into PRTFs? It looks like it's just as hard as it's always been, but maybe it will be worse. I don't know. So that's one factor that introduces an unknown. The other three factors are driven by the approval of the one big beautiful bill. So the first thing is North Carolina's Medicaid expansion being at risk. It's very technical, but what's important to note is that that bill makes it so that there's a freeze on provider taxes. And so in the state of North Carolina, 90% of Medicaid expansion is funded by the federal government. The other 10% is funded by a hospital tax. But costs are going up, okay? And so with costs going up, one of the things that a state might naturally do is add taxes either to a provider or add taxes to a different provider entity beyond hospitals because of one big beautiful bill. They cannot do that. And so we have a trigger law in North Carolina that says the minute that the federal government pays less than 90 percent... The minute that the state has to pay more than 10%, we're out, okay? And so that is at risk. We don't know what that's going to look like, but as it is right now, taxes cannot be... Provider taxes can't be increased, and so it's a very tentative place there. The next piece is that the bill adds work requirements for Medicaid. That, you know, there's lots of research that shows that that doesn't really work. But nevertheless, that's where we are. And what we know from that is that, one, it will add to administrative costs at the county level, but also at the state level. And so if we're adding to administrative costs at the state level, the state has to have a way to pay for that, and they can't increase provider taxes, right? And so the work... And then the other thing that we know is even if we can navigate the work requirements, lots of folks who are on Medicaid will struggle to meet the work requirements and become uninsured, whether temporarily or long-term. So that's a factor. And then finally, the last piece is not about the Medicaid population. It's about folks who purchase their insurance on the Affordable Care Act marketplace. And so the expiration of Affordable Care Act tax credits will mean that some people can't afford insurance anymore. And so we'll have a larger uninsured population, which then speaks back to the question of safety net-funded services or eligibility for state funding through Alliance. So all of the... The only thing that is known here is that we have, in fact, reduced Medicaid reimbursement rates, but we don't know the implications of that yet. We can guess, but we don't know. So all of that is in the air as we talk about rolling out implementation of our behavioral health strategic plan. All right. So let's dig into Phase 1 a little bit more, just Phase 1. So three main focus areas for Phase 1 that I would argue at least two of these are critically important in light of what is happening at the national and the state level. So the first is prevention and early intervention. Then we've got the public awareness campaign, and finally, we've got the implementation roadmap. And this is more of a tactical focus than the other two. So with prevention and early intervention, these are the prioritized action steps. And I want you to... When we think about the goals for the implementation of the plan, increasing outpatient service utilization, reducing ED usage rates, considering the fact that we will probably be walking into a space where we have more uninsured residents, things like this become critically important. Suicide prevention education, behavioral health education, trauma-informed resources for community and faith-based leaders. I will not read them all to you, but these are really, really important entering into an environment where more and more people will have limited access to care. The public awareness campaign goes hand in hand, not only with the prevention and early intervention components of the plan, but also ladder components as well. So this is one where we would be working with a vendor to develop a public awareness campaign focused on both behavioral health resources that are available within our community, but also the identification of points of entry so that we can maximize those points of entry for folks and begin tracking data. I will say that you have already approved funding that would be used for the public awareness campaign, so that was approved for FY 20... With FY 20... awareness campaign, so that was approved for FY '20, with FY '26 budget. So, there's no funding request that you would anticipate coming anytime soon for this plan right now. The last piece is the implementation roadmap. So, you heard me say this is an eight-phase plan. I have a detailed map for Phase One, but I'd like some support, really need some support in going into the weeds on how we're going to get from Phase One all the way through to Phase Eight. So, that is the third component, and again, we would be working with a vendor to support that one. So, if all goes well, by the end of Phase One, we will have an implementation leadership team that's working together regularly to execute on the prevention and early intervention action steps. We will have a prevention and early intervention action team that's developing plans for how they will implement those action steps. We'll have a fully articulated roadmap for all phases of the plan. We will have selected a public awareness vendor, and we would have made meaningful progress towards strengthening prevention and early intervention availability, awareness, and access. So, that is what we're aiming to accomplish with Phase One of the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan. Thank you for your time, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Penn. I'm sure everyone has questions and comments. Madam Clerk, three minutes. I'm going to start with the Chair of HHS, Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Penn, thank you for your presentation. Help me reconcile these two things. This is a Behavioral Health Strategic Plan dated '24 where we already invested in 2024 $43.4 million and contracted with 51 community agencies. With what you've just presented, is this just a continuation or an improvement, or is this a new plan altogether? Question one. Question two, utilization. For the last three years, I've asked for information from the state Medicaid, and we got in one tranche of information about 18 months ago because all of the managed care programs have to report back to the state. And so, there is a body of data on utilization. So, you spoke about prevention and intervention. HIPAA may create some problems in trying to determine the exact service, but as a minimum, we can see how many people actually use services. And you could identify the services with the provider and get some implication, whether it's OBGYN, whether it's mental health, et cetera. So, where are we in terms of getting utilization data? And finally, in terms of revenue, what I understand is that because mental health is such a specialty, that the reimbursement rate is really critical, and that that is one problem. So, are we looking at trying to compensate for a lack of Medicaid reimbursement with a new, a new, a new implementation strategy using different organizations? So, that, I mean, that was real quick because I only have three minutes according to my chairman. But it just seems like we're continuing to go around in a wheel, and we really need to penetrate somewhere to make sure that we're getting some results for people who are experiencing behavioral health or mental health services. So, if you could try to answer those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. I will do my best. So, your first question is about essentially our historical spending on behavioral health contracts, behavioral health services, and where does that fit within the context of this plan now? Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, what I would say is that our past spending on behavioral health has not been done in the context of a strategic plan. So, what's happening right now is I have a division, and I have about $12.5 million in behavioral health contracts. There are other departments that have behavioral health-related contracts. How we came about what we provide versus what they provide and what the community needs is, I haven't been here long enough to tell you how those decisions were made. But what I can tell you is that the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan brings both us, as well as community partners, who are bringing funding to the table together around a unified focus. And what we haven't had is a unified focus on what we should be doing and how we advance forward on that. Does that mean I can't answer your other two?
You, that's for Commissioner Griffin.
Oh, okay.
You've got two other questions, I think.
All right. So, the next question was about utilization data from the state. And what I can share is I've not seen the data that you spoke to. As part of the development of the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan, a gap, a vendor was contracted to do a gap analysis. The data that that vendor provided pulled from Alliance and Alliance only, but it was after the standard plans became active. And so, the data that you're describing is actually data that we have not seen. I look at data on the state website regularly and have not seen what you're describing, so I would welcome further conversation about that.
And somebody got it through Dr. Washington.
Okay.
Through Representative Becky Carney.
Okay. I will, I will inquire with Dr. Washington about that. And then, the last question is about, do reimbursement rates are critical? Oh, okay. So, are we trying to compensate for essentially the low reimbursement rates that Medicaid is providing? I think there's some lobbying effort needed around Medicaid reimbursement rates, right? Because really, we cannot supplant Medicaid. What, one of the strategies that we often use with our contracts is that we fund positions so that the low Medicaid reimbursement rate is less of an issue. And so, for example, one of our major contracts is with Teen Health Connection. They conduct psychological assessments for youth who are in YFS custody. The reimbursement rate for psychological assessments under Medicaid is somewhere around $100 and some odd dollars per hour. That's not, that is not a sustainable rate for a licensed psychologist. And so, most psychologists will not do assessments under Medicaid. And so, instead, we fund psychologists who can do the assessment. So, there's some things that we do like that. This is not specifically related to the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan, but just from the standpoint of strategy and how we work to serve the people in light of the challenges that Medicaid reimbursement rates present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Altman.
I watched a 20-minute encounter between the man who killed Arena and the police, which occurred, I don't know, three or six months before that tragedy. A horrible tragedy for an innocent woman riding in our public transit system. But this interaction between him and the police four or six months earlier, did you listen to it? All 20 minutes? It's heartbreaking. He's saying to the police officer, "I've got something in me, and I need help getting it out, and that's why I called 911." And the police officer says, you know, he's, the first officer is really nice, you know, "I want to help you, but I, you probably need to see a mental health person, and have you considered that?" And the man says, you know, "I need help. I'm asking you for help. You're 911. If you can't help me, who can?" And then, another policeman comes who's not nice, and, and you get a very different outcome in terms of the interaction. It's such a tragedy what happened to Arena. But if you listen to what that conversation, six months before this person begging for help, who clearly didn't get it, it's a, it's a tragedy for him too and for all of us. And so, you know, I keep trying to speak to the issue in a way that people on both sides of the aisle will see that we all want to be safe. We all want safe community. And when we do things like underfund state hospitals or cut reimbursements rates so low that people can't get mental health, it's making all of us less safe, in addition to it's extremely like, not a humanitarian way to treat people. But, but if you, you know, but it's also just completely eroding our public safety. What would be helpful for me, if I could ask through the manager, is a one-pager that, because you said that the General Assembly doesn't directly have to give us money for mental health, but when our state hospital system has radically changed, and when reimbursements rates are cut so low people don't want to take the work, it's, it's a default of the obligations that I think the state does have to fund mental health, which is then showing up in our counties. So, it would be helpful if I had on one piece of paper the things that the state is supposed to do that is not doing. Maybe it's not directly owed to us, but the problem is showing up in our trains and buses and in our uptown and across our county. Because I want us to understand the root cause of our problems so we can actually make progress on solving them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Penn, for this. And to continue this line of what she was saying, if, if we, if the state is not paying, did they ever pay?
For, for what? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. For behavioral health services. Did they ever pay us?
Oh, the county. So, there, up until 2014, Mecklenburg County, essentially, we were Alliance up until 2014.
Okay. Okay. And then, also, to continue with this, she, Commissioner Altman said, what's, you know, what is the most pressing need? If the very first thing that we're trying to do is awareness intervention, is that your very, is that the pressing need? Is that the number one right now?
That is what we are prepared to address, I'm sorry. We're prepared to address that first in part because, yes, it is a critical need, and it is the entryway to mental health services.
Okay.
And so, we, because we don't want folks starting at the ER, we want to introduce prevention and early intervention.
Okay. That makes sense. Back on your, where it says to move from a standard plan to the Alliance-Taylor Plan, a resident must have or receive A, just one of these, right?
Yeah, yeah, just one.
Okay. I just want to make, I just want to make that clear. And also, for the measures of success, well, first of all, your list of partners, C, it's not on there, but CMS is one, correct?
CMS is one of, CMS is one of the partners specifically for prevention and early intervention.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to get there. And again, this is a sampling of the partners.
It's just a sampling. I just wanted to make right.
Yes, they are one of the partners, yes.
Okay, okay. And also, the, for the measures for success, seems to me, and I would think Commissioner Griffin would love this, is that they're very measurable because numbers don't lie. The numbers are going to go up or the numbers are going to go down. I mean, and that's what we're looking for. And I just, I just want to point that out, that much appreciated. It's not complicated, but what is complicated is this whole system. And it seems to me that, I mean, it's, it's, we are not serving our people. It's, it's a sin. Not, this is just like physical health.
That's right.
The brain is part of our bodies, and it is, it's reprehensible how this is so complicated. And the, everything is, it's a sin for what the state is doing, what our insurance companies don't do, and it just is, it just really blows my mind. And I appreciate your work on this. Is, I understand you said this was in the making about '21, '22? So, did we have something specific before, or is it just all kind of coming together?
To my knowledge, and I don't know if any of the folks who've been with the county for longer can speak to this, to my knowledge, the county has never had a behavioral health strategic plan in the past.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Penn, thank you so much. I, I was interested in the slide, I mean, all the whole thing, of course, I'm interested in, but the slide that says what we have, and on number one, you say a strong local service array ranging from prevention to inpatient care. And specifically around that, are you really speaking to adult care versus adolescent care? Because my understanding is that we have nowhere to go. If you, if you have an adolescent who needs care and you can't, you're not rich, okay? If you're on Medicaid or you are uninsured, there is literally nowhere to send an adolescent who is struggling, who needs detox, who needs intensive care, and whether outpatient, residential, nothing, nothing. So, I was just, could you please speak to that?
Yeah, gladly. Yeah, so, one, there are resources in our community that the average community in North Carolina just does not have, one being the Behavioral Health Hospital. So, there are very few behavioral health hospitals, inclusive of an emergency department, in the country, period. So, we have that resource. They do have a child and adolescent unit. They've got partial hospital programs. We have multiple day treatment programs in our community. What we don't have, and I think this is what you're speaking to, what we don't have a lot of is residential care. So, inpatient is your acute inpatient, maybe a three to 10-day stay. Residential care is your longer-term treatment. We don't have a lot of that, especially for adolescents in our community. So...
Are you speaking mainly to substance abuse, or are you talking about...
I'm speaking to both, just behavioral health and substance abuse. We don't have a lot of residential care in our community. We don't have a lot of residential care in our state. But from the continuum of outpatient and prevention to inpatient, which is your acute hospital stay, we've got, we've got more of that than most communities do. But you are correct that there are shortages in the residential space, not only here, but statewide.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. I really, I really think, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly that there's a difference between what is adult, what's available to adults and what's available to adolescents and children.
There, I mean, there are differences, yes. Like, you're either licensed as typically a child or adult facility, or you can be licensed as both. But yes, so there is a difference, though.
Did you already ring the bell? I don't know. I'm not aware. Okay. So, because I'm just wondering, I'm like, did I hear that or not? I just, I'm wondering if this plan that you're speaking of, is it inclusive of, of adults and children?
Yes. The Behavioral Health Strategic Plan focuses on child and adult mental health. It does, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend-Egger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Penn. You always prevents, provide such thorough information, and I love the plan. I love that you have a plan. I think that it looks very thorough and consistent. I think the, the problem is, we need, or maybe you, this will be a question, the problem is, we don't have a budget from the state, right? We still don't have a budget. And, you know, the, everybody's talking about Arena's Law and that situation that happened there, and then the most recent situation. Those are extreme situations. I, you know, those are things that, you know, want off usually, but everyday people who need services, this is devastatingly impactful. So, if you can, please, tell me the difference between the federal and state governments' definition of behavioral health and mental health care. Is there an impact to the funding that we get based on that? And I know at this point, it doesn't matter because we don't have a budget anyway, but is there a difference in that in addition to the distinction with that of where we get the data? Because if you're looking at behavioral health, there are going to be different numbers than if you're looking at mental health based upon the definitions. For instance, you know, we can get data from CNPD on certain things that are related to behavioral health, but it's not necessarily a mental health issue. So, can you explain or expound upon the data for that? And we'll just table the thing about our representatives in the North Carolina General Assembly, who I don't believe this is even on the radar.
Okay. And in interest of preserving your time, can you clarify the question about data?
So, let's say, for instance, from Charlotte Mecklenburg Police, what the, is there a difference between the data that we get from them, or do we get data on behavioral health? You know, we were talking about getting data, Commissioner Griffin talked about getting data with regard to Medicaid. I want to see numbers regarding behavioral health so that perhaps we can start talking a little bit more about preventative health, because I think an entry point should be in the schools, right? If they're continually getting that type of assistance on behavioral health, mental health, whatever the needs are, then there would be less of a need, you know, progressively. And if there is a model somewhere that we can, you know, emulate, then I think that that would be a good idea because it also shows where we can save money and that kind of thing.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. So, the question around how does the definition of behavioral health at the state versus federal level impact funding? I will need to dig a I will need to dig a little deeper on that. What I can tell you is, my understanding is that the difference is really a matter of how those funds are administered. So are they administered by the same organization that administers mental health funding, or are they administered by a different entity? But let me dig a little bit deeper on that so that I can give you more details as to whether or not that's a positive or a negative implication for what we're able to do within our state for folks who have ADD, mental health, and substance abuse needs. And then the question around, is there a difference between data that we get from CNPD or other entities around behavioral health? In our community, we have something run through UNC Charlotte called the Data Trust. And the Data Trust does receive data from a number of different community organizations, including CNPD, but it does not receive very much of any behavioral health data specifically. And so I do believe we could do a data request to the police department to try to get more behavioral health data specifically, but that is not something that was included in the gap analysis and data review that was done in the development of the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan.
Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. Thank you for your very thorough presentation. I love when you do a presentation. I have, like, I really want to focus in on the points of entry where we, where we see the need for behavioral health. So how do we document the need of people coming into the jails, people coming to, into the ER, people calling 911, children in schools? You know, how are we documenting the need to show the need? And that's my first question. We invest, the county invests in the crisis intervention training, you know, and I'm wondering, how come that isn't required for every police officer? Because I think that would be helpful. And another thing, because I keep hearing, I keep hearing critiques about us, so on one of the sessions that we went to at the North Carolina Association of County Commissions, I went to it early on, and it was about Braver Angels. About how do, instead of like creating division with the leaders in the state, who many are in a different political party, how do we find a way to hear each other? When we have 347,000 people on Medicaid in Mecklenburg County, out of a population of, you know, the last count was 1.2 million, how do we, we're very different than any other county. So how do we meet them and talk to them and find a way to show them the needs that we have here, instead of creating division? And I wanted to say, like, Senator Bergen has been here, and I think he's approachable. Like, I think that's a good place to start on, how do we come together to work on a solution? Because it's like an obstacle course. People that are in crisis don't have this kind of energy to go through an obstacle course to get care. So, you know, how, how do we start to solve this problem by talking to the state? And I think it's, you know, that part is, is with us and with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. But I just want to hear your feedback on, how are we documenting the need in, in the jails, ERs, 911, and the schools?
And so, part of the reason that we are starting with both the prevention and early intervention component, but also in reference to your question, the public awareness campaign, it is a public awareness campaign, but some of the components of that campaign include conducting local research related to points of entry. Because in order for that campaign to be effective, we've got to target the right points of entry, right? We have to know where people are already going to first access care or share the need for behavioral health supports. And so that would be, kind of, that's my main thought when I hear your question. As to how or if we are currently documenting what the points of entry are, we do have data from, obviously, the hospital systems, and we do have data from the jail system about utilization of mental health services there and whether or not this is someone's first time receiving care. But that's, that, those are my thoughts right now in reference to your question.
Commissioner Leake.
Let me first say thank you for your presentation. How do we disseminate this information to the general public to understand what the critical issue is, has been, and will continue to be unless this country gets a handle on health care? That's a major, major issue economically and otherwise. And as I sat here and listened to questions, I thought about cultural differences enters into each of these, into mental health and into behavioral health. How do we disseminate this information as a community to impact what children today are experiencing and senior citizens are experiencing as well? How do we correct this issue? And I just mentioned to the chairperson, years ago, we had institutions that confined our people. And many of our people were ashamed that we had, had family members who had to be a part of that process. And it's still today. So how do we adjust and get this community or this country to accept that there are differences between mental health and behavior health? One affects the other and the other affects it. And cultural differences. Help me, honey.
I will do my best.
But thank you so much.
But the question about, how do we disseminate this information to the general public? I, I do think that over time, as a country, as a community, we've done better and better with that. The fact that we're having this discussion now, you heard me say, this county's never had a behavioral health strategic plan before. We had a massive system of care grant in the early 2010s or so, but we haven't had a strategic plan around just the broad array of needs related to behavioral health. And I think part of the reason that we are here right now today is that we are talking about mental health more. We're talking about suicide more. I didn't share this, but the state of North Carolina introduced a blackmail-suicide prevention plan. Because rates of suicide for black males in our state are so tremendously high that it required a separate plan, despite the fact that the state of North Carolina also has its own behavioral health strategic plan, right? But, so the fact that we are making the moves that we're making, both locally and at the state level, that does represent progress. We used to say that black people didn't kill themselves, right? Have we all heard that?
Yes.
We don't say that anymore, not to the extent that we used to. So I do believe that we're making progress, but as far as targeted efforts within this community, again, that is where this public awareness camp, campaign comes in. And doing it right, doing the market research to understand what's happening in our community, understanding the entry points in our community, and then putting the services and the supports or information about those in the right places so that our residents can learn about things, both when they need it and even when they don't.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leake, this public awareness campaign, of course, we're partnering with our communications department, but also to go back to the earlier point that our vice chair made about this one-pager. You know, in the past, we provided you all one-pagers that have summarized some of the topics that we've discussed.
Yes.
I think this will be ideal as well, as far as it summarizes and create a one-pager and provide you, so you can share it with your constituents as well, to complement what we're going to do with the communications department.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes. Commissioner Griffin had a question for our attorney.
There's an autistic statewide organization that went to court to challenge the state's reduction of Medicaid benefits, and they won in Raleigh for autism. Are there opportunities for us to partner with, since we don't want to poke the bear directly, to, to provide that data and information so that if there is a nonprofit organization that could make the case about life and death and community's safety, that they might be able to challenge in court, like the autism organization, and they won? The other piece is that Commissioner Powell, and that is basically, this is life and death. This is public safety. Not black, not white, not green, not pink, or poor or rich. It's public safety. And there has to be a way to present this in such a way that you get folks' attention so they won't have any more arenas or, or Bobo committing suicide or whatever. So I, I would, Mr. Attorney, certainly hope that we could find a way to, if not partner with, maybe that's talking about too much. But if the autistic community could do it, why couldn't the other community do it?
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. One additional comment from Vice Chair Altman.
Between college and law school, I worked for a nonprofit law group that read, that studied, tried to get people off their capital punishments commuted to life. It was like an anti-death penalty group. And it was my job to read every single death penalty case in the state of Florida and catalog the aggravating and mitigating factors that had been most persuasive to the Supreme Court to help them prepare their cases. And I was thinking, Mr. Manager, it'd be really wonderful if we could take the last year of tragic murders in this town and document where we could find mental health being a factor in, in each tragedy by the defendant or the victim or however it arose, so that we could build a stronger case to explain to the public and to our partners how very much public safety, safety is intertwined in this particular community with the lack of access to mental health.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look into that. But to that point, I also don't want to lose sight of Commissioner Powell's point about relationships with our delegation and the, the General Assembly up in Raleigh as well. And I'm making sure that there's clarity in terms of what our needs are here, the funding that Dr. Penn has alluded to as well, and just in general, how can we partner with our delegation, with the General Assembly, to address some of these issues that we're having, particularly as she has clearly articulated, where those responsibilities fall at the state level versus the safety net services that we're providing at the local level.
Okay. So, okay. One, one, one last comment, and then we, then we really got to move on. I've got a couple of things that I want to add to the conversation, but go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead.
No, no.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
My concern is, how do we get to the birth of babies and mobility and family living and how we live and culturally how we live? Why is it we can't get this information to early parents to really know what's going on within the confines? Because many times, people don't know that they have behavioral problems or even mental health problems until they are defined by the community. So that, that's my concern. And, and thank you. I'm happy we have community people here today to be listening to what we are saying and can help to disseminate and carry the message that we're talking about today and hope we get a copy of this handout.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me turn to Dr. Campbell.
And thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I just feel compelled to speak into the room that I think Commissioner Altman's idea about research is an interesting one, and I would just caution us that it's a slippery slope because we do not want to criminalize people with mental illness, right? We have national data over decades that have illustrated that the majority of violent crimes are not, in fact, committed by people with mental illness. We have come a long way in addressing the stigma for people with mental illness, and to go down the road that would somehow reconnect the two would further advance the stigma and may do more harm than good. So I would really want to explore what it would look like if we were ever going to go down that road. The other thing I would say in response to Commissioner Leake is that relative to the stigma, one of the most effective ways to address it is to partner with people who have behavioral health challenges and get them in situations with everyone, social settings, recreational settings intentionally, so that people can see, they are people just like we are, right? And the more exposure you have that normalizes them as humans, the more you can advance an anti-stigma campaign, in addition to the public awareness work and the flyers and the, all of that kind of stuff. It's all relevant, but the most bang for your buck happens when you engage the very people that we're talking about.
That's it.
Thank you. So since we opened up this Pandora's Box, we're going to give everybody else a minute as well, because I'm sure there's additional. So we'll go with Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, do you have some, and then Commissioner Meyer, and then I'll work my way back over to Commissioner Powell and Townsend-Angela. One minute, Madam Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really quick, you mentioned this, and I looked it up, the catchment area for Alliance and the fact that they have to reinvest their profit, but it goes into the catchment area. Can you speak to that as far as how you think we fare in that equation?
I cannot, and neither could the Alliance colleague that I spoke to about this matter.
Because you're not allowed to, or because you don't know how, how?
No, I think it would, just, we would have to go to their financial folks, and I was speaking to someone over a provider network. So I don't know the answer to that question. I can speak to some of the investments I know Alliance makes in this community, but what I don't know is the investments they've made in other communities, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer.
Just one question. Is CNPD one of, of the partners?
Not yet. Sheriff's Department, but not CNPD.
And that, is that a plan?
It can be. Is that a suggestion?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Powell.
I'm good.
You're good. Commissioner Townsend-Angela.
I just want to lift up, actually, what Commissioner Powell said about building the relationships, and again, the budget, the budget, the budget. And just for, you know, folks who want to know and reach out to the North Carolina General Assembly Representatives, the co-chairs for the Mental Health Committee are Senator Jim Bergen, as Commissioner Powell mentioned, Representative Carl, Representative Carla Cunningham, Representative Danny Donnie Lambeth, and Representative Larry Potts. So, you know, you can get engaged by reaching out to them and just seeing that you're engaged, that you're concerned, because these are things that we need. We can't put forth the great plan that she has if we don't have the resources to do it. And the data, getting a, an instrument to get the data, that's got to be in, in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Penn, thank you for the presentation. I just have, I have a little list here, but I'm going to try to make it as quickly, quick as possible. So all three of my great colleagues to the left have highlighted the need for greater collaboration, and I don't disagree at all. But I will tell my colleagues, one of the things that I, I do get frustrated with, with respect to this conversation with collaboration, again, I, I do not feel like we have willing partners. At this point, if people don't know that mental health is a crisis, not just in Mecklenburg County, but all across the nation, across the world, and we have to go and do some extra special song and dance, it's ridic, that's, to me, is...
I don't know.
That, that is a, a, a concept that is going to be hard for me to deal with in thinking that we're going to lead this effort, because it's hitting rural counties, it's hitting urban counties the, the same way. It's a leadership. This is a leadership issue. If the leadership in Raleigh wanted to do something about mental health and fund it the way it needed, whether you're an urban county or a rural county, it would be done. They, they, to me, they know, they know the score. And this isn't just something to get back at Mecklenburg County, in my opinion, because it's hurting everyone. Even in rural communities are, are being decimated. You take the opioid crisis or other sort of crises that we're dealing with. I, I just think that that's the reality of the situation. To me, it comes back to voting, right? You have to put people that really care. You don't, again, so I don't want to beat that dead horse, but... You don't, again, so I don't want to beat that dead horse, but I respect what everyone is saying. I think we should keep open lines of communication, but I don't think we should kid ourselves to think that others can really move that, the leadership. I mean, people can't even move them to, you know, get a budget across the finish line at this point. So I think we know what the score is personally. With respect to Alliance, I think, and colleagues, we probably need to have a conversation about this, but I think we really need to drill down on this reinvestment issue and make an ask to them that we need reinvestment right here in Mecklenburg County, right? We're the biggest contributor, the largest need, the biggest supporter. We need investment right here, not outside of Mecklenburg County. But they cover our catchment. We got rid of Cardinal to bring them in, and they owe a responsibility to the people in Mecklenburg County. That is something, colleagues, that, you know, we can figure out if that's a directive that we need to give to staff, but that's a suggestion that I'm making on this. That is, that doesn't land well with me. Like, I don't, maybe I'm just disconnected and I need to learn, need to understand at a deeper level, which is a real possibility, but that didn't land on me very well at all. It's just, I don't know. That doesn't feel good. The other thing, when we take a look at our need, I need to get with you to get a better handle on what our current impact is versus the need. Like, I just, I just don't know. Like, yes, we have 300,000 people on Medicaid, but when we talk about behavioral health, I mean, what is that need? Our part, our current partners, I know they're doing great work, but there's capacity issues there. So who, how many are being left out? I just, I just don't have a good idea of, you know, do we need more providers so that we can go to the state with a number to say, based on the number of providers that are currently in network with Alliance, we're not meeting the need, and so the need is for another 100,000, which would equate to at least X number of providers. But I would like to have a tangible ask and back that into a number, because, again, we're looking at a problem that I don't think that we, the county, can fund our way out of. And we're not even service deliverers, the way that people look at Mecklenburg County. That's the other thing. When we talk about educating the public, the public believes Mecklenburg County delivers these services, like you can walk into public health and schedule, right? We have a provider network. Am I right, Dr. Penn?
You're correct.
There's a network of providers that fall under Alliance, and we do a little bit, but the scale in which people believe, that's not how it works. So I appreciate the education, but I do want to drill down with you a little bit more, and Mr. Manager, on some of the data pieces that I'm missing out of the plan, because at the end of the day, I really believe what's needed is delivery. We can come up with all the plans, which is awesome, it's a roadmap, but we have to get delivery. We have to get boots on the ground in the community, delivering services, whether it's at school, and to Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell's point, whether it's adults or adolescents. We've got seniors, absolutely. We've got to find a way to deliver services to the people. So I just need to understand that number right there. But thank you for your presentation. I apologize, I went so long with all of this.
Thank you, and happy birthday.
Thank you, Dr. Penn, for a really good presentation. Mr. Chair, the next item on your agenda is an update by our Deputy Director, Carly Godfrey. She's the Deputy Director for the Officer Strategy and Innovation. She's going to present to the board the 2025 results from our community survey.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chair Dorell, Vice Chair Altman, County Commissioners, County Manager Bryant, and staff. Today, I have the honor and pleasure of getting to present to you our 2025 community survey So before we dig in, I just want to give you a highlight of what we'll be discussing today. We'll talk about the background and methodology for the survey itself, give you a highlight of who actually responded to the survey, some questions tied to our community vision that we asked survey respondents. We also have some questions tied to county communication, and then we'll look...
Please, so we can hear you.
Then we'll discuss the most important issue that residents proposed in the survey, and then finally, we'll wrap up with some key takeaways and next steps for the survey. So before we jump into the results, I want to provide you with a brief overview of the survey methodology behind our annual community survey. This is our 23rd annual community survey, so we've been doing this for 23 years, and each year, we contract with a vendor, ETC Institute, to administer the survey. The community survey has three primary goals. The first is we seek to better understand resident perceptions of the county. Second, we're seeking to better understand resident attitudes towards county programs and services. And finally, the third is to understand resident awareness of those same programs and services. The survey was administered this past June and July, from June 2nd to July 14th, and the responses were collected via web, mail, and phone. The results that I'll share with you today are describing as having had a 95% level of confidence with a precision of at least 2.9%, which really means if we did this all over again and conducted another random sample, it result, its result should be within 2.9% percentage points of the original survey. Okay, so digging into who responded to the survey, our team worked closely with ETC Institute to ensure that we had statistically valid sample, random sample of residents in our community. In the next few slides, we'll discuss the breakdown of the respondents by demographics. So this year, we exceeded our goal of obtaining 1,000 resident household responses with the sample. We had a total of 1,118 responses across the county. Now, on the left-hand side here, you'll see on the slide, you'll see that we looked at the distribution of responses across Commissioner District, which I don't think we've ever shown you guys before. And you'll see there are slightly higher percentage of responses in Districts 4 and 5, but overall, there was near equal distribution across all six districts. The map on the right, which is also new for the first time that you haven't seen, is actually each of the individual respondents. So you'll see each person who responded, where they are located throughout the county, again, to show you that I think we did pretty well in terms of covering all parts of the county here. This next slide compares our county population to those who responded to the survey, again, to see that we've got a really representative sample here. So on the left-hand side, you'll see that there's respondents by gender. I do want to note throughout, you'll see that the county population is in the teal color versus the green color, which is our, the bright green color is our community survey, and who actually responded to the survey. So you'll see with the chart on the left, gender has almost equal representation. Really, the biggest kind of difference here is that the census doesn't track gender, so that piece that you see there of non-binary and non-conforming that we allow people to select on the community survey isn't an option when you look at census data. And then for race and ethnicity on the right-hand side, you'll see that the multiracial group is slightly underrepresented in our community survey sample. But overall, we feel like there's pretty good representation here across gender and race and ethnicity. Now, when it comes to educational attainment, we do see an underrepresentation of residents with less education and a corresponding overrepresentation of residents with higher levels of education. This trend has been consistent over the past several years as we look back and see the challenges of trying to reach those with lower levels of education. It shows that those, data has shown that those who are older and more educated individuals tend to be more involved, more likely to respond, engaged in local government. Looking on the right side, when we look at income, we see that households making more than $150,000 are actually underrepresented here in our survey sample compared to the county population. And finally, when it comes to demographics, we looked at age and length of residency here in Mecklenburg County. So we look at age, we see that there's an underrepresentation of residents aged 18 to 34, and an overrepresentation of those older respondents, as you'll see. This age distribution, again, is consistent with some challenges. In the past, it indicates older individuals are more likely to respond to surveys, sometimes reaching the younger crowd can be more challenging. We do plan to work with our vendor in the future to ensure that we have better representation across these age groups. And then finally, on the right-hand side, when we look at length of residency in Mecklenburg County, the majority of respondents, as you'll see here in the gray part of the pie chart, have lived in the county for more than 15 years, followed by the second-largest of those who have lived in the county for five to 10 years. Now, while there's no official figures for the average length of residency for all Mecklenburg County residents, according to the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance, that says 157 new people are moving here every day, we do think that there is opportunity to continue to reach those new residents that are coming here to Mecklenburg County. All right, so now we're, now that we've talked about the demographics and who responded to the survey, we'll jump into some of the meat and transition to the community vision, which Chair Dorell opened us up with at the beginning of this meeting. And so Mecklenburg County's community vision is that we will be a community of pride and choice for people to live, learn, work, and recreate. This survey asked residents to rate these various aspects about the county, and so we'll cover these tenants over the next few slides. So here's an overall look at how residents rated each aspect of the community vision. This chart and those you'll see in the following slides represent the percent of residents that selected either good or excellent when asked the question of, related to each of the community vision statements. So as you see, recreate and learn represented in the green and the gold lines, have consistently lower ratings than live and work represented in the gray and the light blue lines. This year, we saw a decrease, as you'll see, across the board from FY24 to FY25 for each of these community vision components. However, it's important to note that most results in FY24, as you'll see as we move forward throughout, looking at survey results, were unusually high, and we believe that this drop really may be back, more back towards the long-run average that we've tended to see over time. So before we jump into this first component of live, I want to first take a moment to orient you to the slide, because you'll see the same layout over the next few slides. We'll see on the left, you have the primary trend data, so over time, how this question has fared, and on the right section, we really tried to highlight any salient data points that emerged in our analysis. So we looked at cross demographics tied to respondents' age, gender, educational attainment, length of residency, income, and geography to determine, to determine if there were any differences. So on the right-hand side, when there are differences, and we saw some, that's what we pulled out to highlight. So digging into live here, this year, we see that residents' rating of Mecklenburg County as a good or excellent place to live decreased from 81% to 75%. Again, noting that our tenure average over this time actually has been 75%, so pretty in par with that average over time. On the right-hand side of this slide, you'll see that those with less time living in the county are more likely to be satisfied when Mecklenburg County is a place to live, with 92% of those living here less than a year rating it as good or excellent, whereas the lowest satisfaction was in those who have been here for more than 15 years at 72%. Similarly, we look at age. Those in the age 55 to 64 age group were least likely to rate Mecklenburg County positively at 76%, while those in the 45 to 54 age group were the most likely to positively rate this aspect at 82%. Now, I do want to caution, while these breakdowns do not explain why we're seeing these decreases, they do provide a look into who may be driving some of the results that we see. Next, we'll go into learn. Looking at Mecklenburg County as a place to learn, this is consistently the lowest rated of the four community vision categories. In FY25, we saw a slight decrease from 62% to 58%, which is slightly under the tenure average of 60%. Now, when we look at demographics on the right-hand side, we see those in the 25 to just under $50,000 income category rate learning in the county most positively at 66%, while households over 100,000 have the least positive rating at 54%. In general, as you can see with the chart, we see a decrease in satisfaction as household income tends to rise. The downward trend in satisfaction is consistent with studies that show that household satisfaction with public education tends to decrease as income increases. This is often tied to the assumption that higher-income families have options. They have higher expectations and a wider range of opportunities, such as private school, compared to those with low-income families. Finally, on the bottom, you'll see when we look at gender, that male respondents rate Mecklenburg County as a place to learn more positively at 63% in agreement compared to females at 55%. And again, when we look at other studies, this is consistent with national trends and recent polls that found that only 28% of mothers felt K through 12 education was going in the right direction compared to 48% of fathers. Next, we'll look at perceptions of Mecklenburg County as a place to work. Overall, 76% of respondents rated Mecklenburg County as an either good or excellent place to work. Looking into the demographics, we find that individuals who have higher levels of education tend to be more satisfied with Mecklenburg County as a place to work, probably not a surprise. Those with a postgraduate degree were most satisfied at 83%, while those with the less than high school graduate were least satisfied with 67%. Again, this is consistent with a general positive correlation of increased education with increased job opportunities. We know that many of our existing workforce development programs here in Mecklenburg County are geared towards assisting those with lower levels of educational attainment to help them increase job opportunities. Now, when we look at gender on the bottom part of the slide, males were eight percentage points more satisfied with Mecklenburg County as a place to work compared to females. Again, this is pretty consistent with other data that shows that women are more likely to file for unemployment in Mecklenburg County compared to their male counterparts. While women, as we saw earlier, represent 52% of the county population, they make up a total of the 61% of unemployment claims here in the county. Maybe. Oh, there we go. All right, and then finally, we take a look at how survey respondents look, see Mecklenburg County as a place to recreate. 68% of our respondents rated Mecklenburg County as a good or excellent place to recreate, which, again, is consistent with the 10-year average of 68%. When we look at demographics, the one piece that really stood out was household income, which showed the greatest difference in perceptions. Households making over $100,000 were the most satisfied with recreation opportunities at 75% compared to only 59% of those making less than $25,000. I do want to note that while we asked residents about their perception of the county as a place to recreate, that this item is not specifically asking about park and recreation or our park and recreation department. However, we do have some internal park and recreation customer satisfaction data and some additional data that we'll talk about later in the presentation, that does indicate that those actually people who use parks are actually way more satisfied than what we see here in terms of recreation opportunities. Again, this is not surprising, as it, individuals who actually tend to utilize services tend to have a higher rate of satisfaction with those services in the county. Finally, here, we do have some benchmark data that we like to be able to put in front of you guys from our vendor. They administer this survey around the country to various-sized communities, and so we have benchmarks here for learn, sorry, for live and work. We don't have any for learn and recreate. They don't ask that consistently across the country, but they do have ones for, as Mecklenburg County is a place to raise children, is a place to retire. So here, we put those just for you to be able to see. The benchmarks that are included in the teal line, Mecklenburg County is in the green line, our survey, those are other communities and counties that have a population of over 250,000 people, to give you some reference points. So as you see, Mecklenburg County has remained an excellent or good place to live and work for years, consistently being above other large communities. If you look at the bottom two, we talk about as a place to raise children and retire, you'll see that in the last two years, our residents have been more satisfied with Mecklenburg County as a place to raise children, as a place to retire, compared to other communities. While the results for these benchmarks have decreased this past year over Mecklenburg County, we see a very similar trend for other communities as well. So this next section will cover resident perceptions of Mecklenburg County's communication. The survey asked residents about their satisfaction with a few aspects of our county communication here and engagement, and two of those questions are, do you consider Mecklenburg County to be open and transparent with information about county issues, services, and performance? And how good of a job would you say Mecklenburg County does at communicating information about county issues, services, and performance to the public? So the first question about transparency has decreased slightly from 60% to 55%. And again, recent polls and studies, as you're probably not surprised, have shown a similar trend in lack of trust of government at a federal level as well. The second question about communication quality represented by the light blue line that you see on the graph has actually increased by five percentage points this past year, from 52% to 57% of people selecting good or excellent. So for this communication quality question, we also ask respondents a follow-up question. So if they said, if they didn't say excellent, they said fair or poor, why they said that? And so on the right-hand side, you'll see some examples of quotes. Again, this doesn't encompass everything, but some of the key highlights, examples that people said. So almost 30% of the 119 responses mentioned not having ever received communication from the county, and about 15% of the responses mentioned insufficient information being provided. Now, while the perceptions of transparency have decreased, I think it's a big win that the overall quality of our communication has increased at the same time. So another aspect of engagement we ask about on the survey is satisfaction with the amount of opportunities for resident participation. The slide shows the percentage of residents either strongly agree or agree with a statement, "I am satisfied..." "I am satisfied with the amount of opportunities for resident participation in county policy development and decision-making." This question's remained at an all-time high of 59%, holding steady from last year. Now, when we look at results by demographics on the right-hand side, we see that older respondents were less likely to be satisfied with opportunities for participation. However, there is a slight uptick for those in the 65-plus age group. We also see again that female respondents are less satisfied than male respondents with opportunities for participation. Finally, as it relates to county communication, we asked several questions about resident awareness of programs and services that the county offers. So the chart on the left-hand side includes all programs we ask about on the survey that have a very clear target population based on their eligibility requirements. So for example, we have the Homes Program, Crisis and Adventure Program, the LEAP or the Low Income Energy Assistance Programs, that all have income thresholds. We also have things like immunizations and senior nutrition that have age requirements tied to them. Now, when we compare the target population's awareness, represented by the bright green bars here, to the general population awareness in the teal bars, we see that the target population was actually more aware than the general population for all these programs. Now, again, while it'd be ideal to have everyone know about every program that we have, I think it is really important to recognize that it's most important that those who actually need the programs and services are aware of them. And this year's results reflect the positive impact that our targeted communications have made in making those populations aware of the services. Now finally, for this slide on the right-hand side, I do want to show you, there's a table that shows a few different pieces. So you'll see, first, there's the county program, then you'll see this year result, and then the increase in results from last year to this year. I do want to point out that as we talk about mental health, the highest increase in awareness was actually in mental health services, in a 15% increase over last year. You guys do have an appendix in the back of this presentation that you can find as a table and breakdown of all of these survey questions and the associated population targets. This next section I'll cover quickly highlights some additional resident perceptions of a variety of topics that we ask in this survey. The first is around reducing racial disparities, which again, remains one of the board's budget priorities and helps guide where investments are made in the county. In collaboration with our Office of Equity and Inclusion, we asked survey respondents about their level of agreement with the following statements: about Mecklenburg County honors the identity of individuals and treats them with dignity and respect, and that Mecklenburg County's services and programs are racially equitable. On the left-hand side of the slide, you'll see the results for these two questions. The first about honoring individuals and treating them with the dignity and respect decreased by eight percentage points, and the question around services being racially equitable decreased by only two percentage points. Now, on the right-hand side, you'll see the breakdown of each of these questions by race and ethnicity. The American Indian and Alaskan Native or Indigenous group was the least in agreement with dignity and respect, while the multiracial group was least in agreement with racially equitable. For both the questions, the Hispanic-Latino group actually had the highest level of agreement. Now, while we shouldn't draw broad conclusions from this data, given some of the small numbers or the ends that you'll see here associated with each of them, it is helpful in understanding perceptions of groups and what groups may be impacting the overall results. So last year, for the first time, we asked about trust in Mecklenburg County and whether respondents can trust Mecklenburg County to handle local problems. Last year, 65% of respondents agreed, and we saw a slight decrease this year to 62%. Again, when we look at demographics on the right-hand side, we see that income influences the level of agreement to this question. In general, those with lower levels of household income were less likely to trust Mecklenburg County than those with higher levels of income. Again, research from other institutions such as Pew Research have shown similar trends across the nation with individuals with higher levels of income being more likely to trust in local government institutions. When it comes to overall perceptions of the quality of life in Mecklenburg County, we saw a large decrease from 76% to 67%. While this is a large dip from last year, we do remain close to the tenure average of 70%. On the right-hand side, you'll see that both gender and household income impact perceptions of the overall quality of life. With males, 6% more likely to say that quality of life was either good or excellent compared to females, and not surprisingly, similar to other trends that we've seen, higher incomes have a better perception of the overall quality of life in Mecklenburg County. Now, we also asked those who take the survey about environmental issues here in Mecklenburg County, and we present a list of these nine environmental issues that the county is addressing and ask them to choose the top four. We've had some changes in wording of this question over time, but really, the key takeaway here is the top priority hasn't changed over the last few years that we have asked this on the survey. So drinking water remains the number-one priority, followed by waste and litter, groundwater contamination, and air pollution. Next, we'll talk about resident perceptions of county facilities. Residents are asked how safe they feel at four different types of facilities, including our parks, our greenways, our recreation centers, and our libraries. Overall, there is a decrease across all the facilities, again, from '24 to '25, but libraries are consistently rated the highest at 97%, while greenways are consistently the lowest at 76%. Again, as I mentioned, we also asked some specific questions tied to Mecklenburg County Park and Recreation, of which 90% of the respondents have visited a park and rec site, but only 52% have visited a greenway. 95% of those visitors to those sites positively rated them. Again, as I mentioned, the perceptions of those who've actually used the facilities tend to be higher than overall general perceptions. All right, finally, for this section, I want to talk about some benchmarks. So we do have a few additional benchmarks similar to ones we looked at before tied to the community vision for here in Mecklenburg County. So starting at the top-left corner, you'll see overall quality of services by Mecklenburg County down from 70 to 60%. The value of county taxes and fees, down from 42% to 39%. Customer service provided by county employees on the bottom-left, followed by availability of information about county services and programs on the bottom-right. Overall, as I mentioned, there are very similar trends here tied to the community vision. And while all of the services decreased, we're actually still above our FY23 results from two years ago. All right, next, this is my favorite question on the community survey. So the question around the most important issue facing Mecklenburg County today. This is one of the spaces where residents can write in whatever they want, and so they're not prompted with anything. They're free to write whatever they felt was most salient, and our fantastic team then goes and codes all of this to really come up with the most important issue. The left-hand side of this slide, we have the resulting topics of the themes that were most prevalent in this year's survey. The bright green is our FY23, followed by the teal FY24 and the gold FY20, sorry. This year FY25 is the green, followed by FY24 in the teal and FY23 in the gold. Again, affordable housing remains our most important issue identified here in Mecklenburg County. While the result did decrease slightly by two percentage points, it still remains strongly at number one compared to number two at crime and public safety at 20%. Now, the table on the right-hand side ranks, shows the rank order of these issues from last year and this year according to the change in rank order. As you'll see, number one, two, and three, affordable housing, crime and public safety, and traffic and transportation still remain the top three. The other issues saw slight changes. For example, the cost of living rose from ninth place to seventh place in 2025. Now, while all of these areas are the core responsibility of the county, we recognize that. The responses do reflect the community's overall perception of our most important issue So just want to dig a little bit deeper into the most important issues since affordable housing continues to rise up. And we do ask some additional questions on the survey regarding that. To the left, you'll see, again, the trend since we started asking this question first in FY17, and on the right-hand side, we've got some additional questions that we ask tied to affordable housing. So the first is around perception of Mecklenburg County as a place to find affordable rental housing in the blue line. So the blue on the bottom is rental versus a place to buy your next home in the gold line. Overall, what you'll see is that 47% of respondents rated Mecklenburg County as a positive place to buy their next home, where only 23% rated positively to find affordable housing. When we looked at differences to see if there's any difference between homeowners versus renters, there honestly was no difference, which is quite surprising. They both had very similar ratings. For example, with the ranking Mecklenburg County as a place to buy your next home, it was 48% for homeowners and 46% for renters. The largest change across these two measures was the positive change across affordable rental housing. Now, this could be due to supply and the growing number of apartment complexes throughout the county, while the county, while the number of houses remains relatively stable. So I know I've gone through a lot of data really quickly and a lot of numbers, so I want to take a minute to recap some of the key takeaways here from the presentation. The first, around the most important issue, affordable housing continues to remain the most affordable issue, important issue, followed by crime and public safety and traffic and transportation. Around the community vision, while we did see a slight decrease across all the results, we do remain along our tenure average for each of these, and we continue to outperform some of the larger benchmark municipalities. When it comes to public safety, residents continue to feel safest in our county libraries while feeling least safe on greenways. However, as we noted, those who actually tend to use the parks and greenways actually feel a lot more safe than those who do not. And then finally, as we've seen through much of the presentation, as you've seen on the right-hand side of the slides, gender and income have some of the biggest impacts on resident experience and perceptions. Males tended to have more positive experiences and perceptions than females, while those with higher household incomes tended to have higher perceptions of county compared to those with lower levels of income. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the survey, we've been doing this for 23 years. While we've significantly added to the survey, it has grown over time. The results have remained kind of relatively consistent year over year, and so our goal is to spend some additional time over the next coming months looking into some additional best practices in community surveying to improve the survey, as well as incorporating some new questions that may provide additional context for you tied to our county's corporate scorecard that's currently under development. So our hope is through holistically reviewing the survey, we'll not only better align the questions that we currently ask, but that we may provide additional insight as to all of the whys that I'm sure you have that tend to come from survey data. So we plan to relaunch the Reimagine Survey in the upcoming summer of 2026. Now, before I open it up for questions, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to recognize my fantastic team. So we have Ms. Sidney Markham and Eris Cruz-Mora here, who were the brains behind all of this and who spent tons of time, yes. They spent time creating the survey, working with departments, analyzing the data, putting together presentations. So they are truly superstars here. And then I'd be remiss not to mention our fearless leader, Mr. Michael Griswold, who you get to see often, and who gave me a little bit of space to be able to present in front of you guys today. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, this time, we're going to go in reverse order. I'm going to start with Commissioner Leake.
I want to say thank you for informing us of the possibilities of what we need to change and the good things about Mecklenburg County and the city of Charlotte. And I keep seeing housing is a major issue that we are confronted with and have been for the last 10 or 15 years, and transportation is a major, and public safety. So thank you for your work and to look at genders and see gender and see where women fit in or not fit in economically. The other part is, as it relates to greenways, ring the bell, greenways. Thank you so much. And I was just touching my chairperson here as we bruised the information, but we need to keep this on hand so we can make reference to it. So thank you and your staff. Where's your staff?
Right over here.
I can't see them. Thank you. Thank you so much. Enjoy it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for, thank you for your presentation. I don't think you ever, like, had a hiccup in your whole presentation. A couple things. So when I'm falling asleep at night, I try to think of like all the different gifts in the world that people have that, that make, make the world better because everything is so rough right now. And I was thinking about like there's a solar flare coming and all the, the people that study that and how their brains are so amazing to be able to study what the sun is doing. Same for community surveys. So thank you for your work on that. And I want to say I didn't get, I didn't get to fill it out, but if I had to put in the survey whether or not I trust Mecklenburg County...
If you trust what?
If I trust, my trust in Mecklenburg County, I would say, yeah, like the strongest, strongly agree, I have trust in Mecklenburg County because I know that whatever we find out the needs are, we're working on it. So if, if something is hard on our citizens, we are working together to solve that. And so I have a lot of trust in Mecklenburg County. I'm really happy to see the environmental questions added. I'd like to see some more open-ended questions on the survey because, you know, if anyone understood stormwater management, they would, they would be concerned about the flood risk. And so I don't know how you decide on your questions, but it would be nice to have more open-ended questions. And I don't really have any questions, just gratitude for your brains for your ability to sift through all this information. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend-Enger.
Thank you guys so much. You know, data is key, and let me just preference this with saying, this, you're right, that your staff, this is amazing for being able to put all of this together, and it's easy for us now in your presentation, which you talk very fast, very good, but very fast. So it's easy for us to sit here and come up with, oh, I wonder if they asked this, or this should have been asked, or that should have been asked. That is not the, the area or the space that I'm coming from. But my question has always been, from the first time I was sworn in, and it was one of my priorities when I ran, is the mode, do we know how people are getting their information based on the demographic, their ethnicity, their age, their gender? How are they, can we make some inferences on how they get their information? Because I would really love to see us being a more pull, or, I'm sorry, a more push, rather pushing information out rather than requiring residents to pull information from us. So more push rather than pull. Because I was talking to a provider or a community partner the other day, and they were talking about the fact that a lot of, or some of the ones that they were talking with within the groups that they were working with didn't know about the double, double bucks with SNAP. So I was like, okay, that's unusual. So we need to make sure that the people who need the information the most are getting it, and then we're able to cross-reference based on all of this wonderful data that you've collected. And then on page, your slide 28, when you talked about the most important issues, it seemed to me that a year ago, childcare was in there, and it is not on here today. So I wanted to know, is there a distinction made between education, which is on here, and childcare? Or do you think the public conflated that themselves? Because this is what, this was the open-ended question, correct?
Correct, yeah. And so for that, some of times, depending on the coding for the questions and how people respond related to childcare, sometimes that will roll up into education as well.
All right, and then the last question, I think that's it. I think you did an excellent job. I just, I desperately want to know how people get their information.
And we actually have a question. We didn't include it here because we have tons of questions on the survey, much longer than this, but we actually do ask people the preferred source of county communication and list out things from newspapers and newsletters all the way to all of our different social media posts, and so something that we can pull together may get to you as well.
Please, thank you so much.
Of course.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is super interesting information that I know it takes a lot of time to absorb all of this, but I really am impressed with some things that are really steadily going up, like I think our public information is steadily really rising with folks. But, you know, there's some concerning things here, too, and so I'm just, you know, I appreciate the, the work, and I'm going to try to absorb this a little bit more. So thank you.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Thank you so much, both of you. Just a couple of questions or thoughts. About the, the, on 17, some of the comments, the information is not easily accessible, that we receive very little information. And I guess this might be a rhetorical question, but I mean, if they don't sign up for our communications, then how would they, I mean, if they're not using the services or... communications, then how would they, I mean, if they're not using the services or have no need for services, and I, you know, I understand why that's low. So, I don't know if there's a way we can, do you use services? How's the messaging? Or do you use services? How, how's the communication? I mean, I don't know if y'all do that, if...
Yeah, not right, not as of right now, but it's definitely something as we look forward into our next community survey, and we're doing this redesign and looking at best practices, that's something we can definitely take into account to get an idea of who's actually utilizing services and based on that, what their perceptions of communications tied to those services are.
And the other thing, and affordable housing doesn't surprise me as one of the biggest issues. I'm surprised that education wasn't in the top three. But also, transportation and crime is not technically county, is under the county purview. So, I wonder if there's also a way to maybe make a little bit of education about what the county does. And then from what the county does, what is the important issues to them?
Yeah, and so, I will say in the cover letter, so that people receive in the paper survey or online, there actually is an overview of key county services. So, we list about, probably about 15 to 20 county services of what the county does do to try and frame. But again, as people get to this and we talk about community issues, they go beyond just county services and respond to things like traffic and infrastructure.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I really do appreciate, this is very interesting.
Yeah, let me go to Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
I just wanted to follow up on your question because on 19, I think I misunderstood what it was saying on the target population. So, the target population just means the folks who are answering the survey, not, because this one was about services, right? And so, I thought it was saying, the people who are targeted for those services have a better awareness than just the general population.
Correct.
But that's not what you're saying.
No, that is correct.
You're saying if everyone who takes the survey is more...
No, so this is the target population of those who took the survey. So, we get all kinds of demographic data around individuals as they take the survey. So, they tell us about income levels, household, things like that, that help us to better understand if they are part of the target population for each of these programs. So, this is just for survey respondents. So, the general population is all survey respondents, general population. The target population is those specifically who fall into those categories who took the survey.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Everyone on here is survey respondents.
Okay, everyone on there.
So, blue is all survey respondents, the teal color is all survey respondents. Green is survey respondents, but just those who would qualify for those services based on the information we received from them.
So, like senior nutrition program, 48%, tell me the 48 and the 54, what's the difference?
So, the 48% is the overall result, that everyone across the entire community survey, 48% said that they were aware of our senior nutrition programs. 54% of those respondents who would have qualified for senior nutrition, based on the age that they gave us and demographic information, said that they were aware of the services.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of what you were saying. If they need the service...
So, exactly, this is saying, so this is saying if those people who likely need the services or could utilize the services are more aware than those who don't, or the general population.
And in some cases, they're still not very aware.
Correct.
But they're more aware than others. Yes. I think I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Alman.
Thank you so much. Go into slide 26. So, you know, people do expect, well, 28, sorry about that, people do expect local government to solve issues. And they are, as we all know, a little impatient when we tell them what our jurisdiction is and isn't. They just want it solved. And I respect that. And we do have a piece of affordable housing, and we do have a piece of public safety, and we certainly have a piece of, you know, traffic and transportation insofar as this big community conversation that we were very important and just concluded, and so on and so on. What I would like to ask, and I really appreciate Dr. Campbell giving me that correction and insight in our previous conversation around the homicides that we've had in our community and how to go about thinking about it and getting to root causes and being sure we never do anything to further stigmatize mental health. I really appreciate and agree with that. What I would like, maybe this is a better refinement of my ask, is to understand what is the root cause of the homicides that we've had in the last year? Because I'm getting a lot of input from community. They want me to do this, and they want me to say that, but I don't really know, as I sit here today, what are the patterns for the homicides that we have had in the last year or two? What percentage of those people were, you know, as a result of a law that could have, you know, like with the arenas law, fix certain kinds of ways in which people can be out in the community? Like, is it, was it, was it related to, like, what are the root causes? And so, Mr. Manager, I know that that would require collaboration with the city, but we can't really talk intelligently about our role in the ecosystem without understanding the root causes of the homicides we're seeing locally over the last year or two. And so, I'd like to refresh and repeat a request that we somehow get some insight into what is happening around our homicide rate, since the county has certain pieces of the puzzle, not the overall ownership of law enforcement. But we are a part of the ecosystem to understand what more in our role we could be doing.
Yeah, I understand your question and your interest. There's a lot of challenges there, including when you say the last year, as you know, some of these homicides haven't been resolved yet as well. So, allow us to go back and see what we can do relative to your question, and then follow up accordingly, and see if that will get closer to what your interests are, rather than committing to how you have asked the question verbatim. Let us go back and do some due diligence.
That would be amazing, and I'm so appreciative to your willingness. Thank you, sir. Since I didn't hear the bell go off, I will say, I think it's fascinating, Dr. Johnson, did it go off?
No.
Oh. Commissioner Powell had a question mark on her face. No, that's okay. These are not time-sensitive. I can do them later, thank you.
You have time, go ahead.
Okay, well, Dr. Johnson, I think it's really interesting that clean drinking water rose up as the number one concern in the community, but to my knowledge, we haven't had an issue around clean drinking water in Mecklenburg County. I'd like for you to speak to that. And can someone speak to why female respondents seem to be more pessimistic, you know, on a lot of these graphs? I'm wondering if there's any informed insight as to why that might be.
That's not for men to answer.
Spoken like a...
Inquiring minds.
Want to know, that's right. We're all ears, go ahead.
Well, good afternoon. What I would say about the top four environmental issues is there's oftentimes resident perceptions of what is happening in our community. Data-based, as it relates to our drinking water, the information that is presented by the city of Charlotte shows that we are generally meeting the standards or doing better than the standards that are associated with how we rate our drinking water. Notwithstanding that, though, persons think about things that are happening naturally in our environment and the like, and they have a broader lens than the micro of our community. And so, when they start thinking about things that they are wanting us to ensure that we're reacting to from an environmental perspective, you hear air, you hear water, no matter what is really happening directly in our community. And you also have that because, and I'm guilty of this to some degree, you have a lot of persons that also are intentional about drinking bottled water. And when you see people drinking a lot of bottled water, they may sometimes already have the perception that the drinking water has, it's not of good quality. So, when you couple those two things, just in day-to-day experiences and behaviors and what you're seeing in the news and like, it influences your perception about what you're responding to.
Well, I think it's really important for the community here that our drinking water is actually doing just fine, according to what you have said.
The quality of the water is fine, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't still make it, you want it to continue to be fine. So, you've got to continually have strategies in place to ensure that we're able to keep the quality that we have. You can't just expect the quality and we've achieved it, check the box and think it's no longer important. As soon as you turn your head the other way, you have the opportunity to possibly lose ground.
And then the gender question?
Oh, yeah, the fun gender question. So, I think there's kind of two pieces to this, right? So, there are some questions on here that we have data more tied to in terms of, like, those most impacted by Mecklenburg County as a place to work, right? So, we know that women are more likely to be unemployed versus the males. We have understanding as to what perceptions around that may be. At the same time, you know, most of these questions are around perception, right? And so, sometimes women are, for some of these questions, females are, for example, maybe closer tied to decision-making for the family as it comes to things like schools, education, things like that. And so, while we don't have a ton of data from a qualitative perspective to tell us why females maybe overall have not as great perception of the county as males, I think that some of those other trends and data that we know tied to that help at least give us some light and shed some light onto that.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin.
Yeah, just looking at slide 19, just the question and an observation, seemed like everything has increased from last year. So, it seems like we're doing better overall, and I think that's good. What, how does your staff share more particular information that you get with county departments that are running some of these programs? I'll just take one, the homes program, because revale is coming up, you know, 18 months, 24 months, and you certainly want a higher percentage of people participating, eligible folk participating in that program. Just curious as to how you sit down, like you're sitting down with the board with different departments and unpack the data and have that conversation. The observation that I have, as housing continues to be there, the county's housing and instability and homeless study that was produced suggests that $26.62 per hour for a one-bedroom, fair-market-rate apartment, which is substantial in Mecklenburg County, because a lot of people don't make $26.62. So, housing across the board, I think, and purchasing a home will continue to be that because the cost of living here in Mecklenburg, council housing in Mecklenburg County is going to go, continue to go up. What I would just say to my colleagues as we talk about affordable housing, Commissioner Leek mentioned it, but I always talk about mobility housing, you know, I'm getting to this up with mobility piece, that we, whatever we do with affordable housing, we have a component to make sure people improve the quality of their lives for themselves, their children, to attack intergenerational poverty, that we just don't put people in a house, although it's valuable, critical, and all this other stuff. But we find a way to partner with other people because it's expensive, but to help people improve their quality of life. That's my question and my observation.
Great, yeah. So, I think one of the great things, we have a great relationship with all of our departments. And so, when we prepare the survey each year, and we go out and field to all of our departments around, hey, are there any key programs or initiatives that you're doing that you need better understanding of resident perceptions or understanding of their awareness of? So, that's where we start in terms of understanding what they're doing. We also partner with our public information department because they have a list of things that they know that they're planning to roll out in terms of awareness campaigns over the year. And so, that helps us form this list of programs and services. Once we get the results back, we do definitely take this and send the data to each of the relative departments for them to be able to know and understand the breakdown by demographics and things like that for each of these questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Leek had a follow-up.
My question is, how do we disseminate this very report to the general public so they can look at our comparison with what the city is doing and what the county is doing as it mobilizes itself? Whenever there's growth, crime increases, poverty increases. We know all of this. But let us put this information where people can see it. And people are moving to Mecklenburg County in droves, and there needs to be a moratorium to stop the growth until the infrastructure has been set up appropriately to meet the needs of the community. And until we do that, we're going to, we're going to have major issues here continuously to grow. So, help us to say to the city and to the community, we need to do a moratorium, stop the growth until we fill our infrastructure as it ought to be. Everybody in the world is moving in Mecklenburg County, and they're bringing their problems with them when they come. Drugs, alcohol, housing, living conditions, separation of families. So, how do we meet the needs of our people? It's major, major living issues. And thank you for your report, darling.
Of course, thank you.
But how do we get it out to the public?
Yes, and we'll definitely make sure, this available, we're actually talking just with public information before this, so they'll be posting it up there, and we'll work with them, too, to make sure that we can get out via multiple channels and make it available for the public, this exact presentation.
But we have to help you. That's why I do consent items every time, so the public will know how we spend money.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Carly, I don't think I've ever seen you present.
Seen you up here before?
No, I don't think so. I really think this is the first time. You did fantastic, great job.
Thank you.
Really great job. So, I wanted to start with that. The other things that I have, and Mike, we may need to jump in here, we do, how many community surveys do we do? Like, because sometimes we're doing polls, sometimes it's community surveys, sometimes it's, there are different ones. So, I'm just trying to figure out, give us a sense of the, I think there's, I want to say there's like three or four different type of surveys excluding the employee survey because that's a kind of a different thing. But the other ones, it's usually the very similar data. So, can you speak to that first? And then I've got several other things.
Sure, absolutely. So, we do in OSI, we do the Employee Climate Survey, like you mentioned, but in terms of community surveys, we do this. The Community Pulse that you mentioned is a project that OSI has historically done. We have not done it this year, but that is where we have historically gone out and seen, you know, in the economy or in the housing space or what have you, what does the data kind of look like in those spheres? And we would historically have come forward and provided that to the board at either a January retreat or sometime in the spring, as you're working on your budget. The other thing that I'll add is I know that our friends in OMB have done a budget survey. One of the things that we talked about last year when I came forward and brought this presentation to you all is an opportunity to combine those surveys. And one of the things that we did this year, and actually it was part of the survey that Carly just presented, was to bring over budgets, survey questions into the survey so that we can start to have a unified approach moving forward. So, my office and Adrienne's office were working very closely together on those. But to answer your question, community survey and budget survey are probably the two that are most similar. We also, in the past, have done community polls.
So, thank you for that. And the point that I'm making is, we get all this, we get this amazing information. What I think would be helpful from my perspective, and again, we need to discuss it as a board, but I don't want to be reactive to the top X priorities here, and then you guys present something else, and I'm running over here saying, okay, we got to react to that. To be able to bring all of the information, maybe in a summary, from all the different survey tools that we're using, so we truly can say with 100, 90% reliability, that the top priority for Mecklenburg County residents is X, or Y, or Z, with a combined look at it, right? And some kind of way break it up, because as we go through, you know, things may change. So, from, depending on what questions you're asking, you know, it kind of changes. So, I don't know, and it sounds like you're moving towards that anyway, so I think that's great. And so, the closer we can get there. The second question is, when we look at this data, give us a reliability score. So, this, this is, I mean, obviously, the respondents are 100% reliable, but I'm saying as far as being reflective of the broader community, we know that it's 70% reliable for the broader community is a 10%. Like, give me some sort of score.
So, that's what I mentioned in the beginning. So, we're 95% level of confidence interval of that, if you take 95%, that if you take any one of these data points, that the, if we redid this again, we should be within plus or minus 2.9 percentage points of that. So, give or take really three percentage points of the results, community at large.
Right, and so, what we're also saying is, if I pulled some... Right, and so what we're also saying is, if I pulled some 10 people in randomly off the street, I should get comparable results based off the demographics.
Potentially. I would say potentially only because this is make sure, so the big key piece is making sure it's a random survey, right, and a random sample of individuals that are reflective of the county demographics and population. So as long as your group of people would be responsive with that, then yes, if you pull those people out and redid that, yes, you should have very similar results.
Okay, great. That's helpful. The next thing that I have, when you guys looked at the top seven issues and we do go back to the other surveys that are taken, is it in alignment with what we've seen and the other tools that we use?
I think they're slightly different. Michael, you can correct me on this. Just because there's, what budget has asked in the past has been very centered around our services and what we provide as Mecklenburg County. So as you guys have mentioned, a lot of these here aren't necessarily core Mecklenburg County responsibilities, so the responses there have looked different because of that.
Okay.
The one thing I'll add, on the budget survey, and on the budget piece of that, when it was conducted within this survey, we received very similar results to what we shared with you back in the day. So we did see a huge change. And so as we're transitioning to this new approach, we're confident that we're getting the same. We did have similar results in terms of the top five. What we checked for, or what we asked about is what is your highest level of need for your family, and then what should be the priorities, and then we take that and summarize that to give you kind of a top five.
Understood.
And so if you're called affordable housing, it's still one of the very top ones, and then also some of the other issues that follow up.
I got you. And thank you for that. I just have two more things. And the reason why I'm kind of honing down on this and not letting it go as much is because we took education off of one of our survey tools, and then when I looked here, it polled differently. And so I just, again, that's why I'm kind of trying to get a little better feel.
Yeah, that is one of the differences you will see. We stopped surveying about education as part of the budget priority because we knew it was a high priority and we knew we were going to fund it. So what we tried to do with that budget survey is drill down into specific things that we knew were going to be critical decisions in that year. That's also why you won't see some of the things like transportation that come up through those questions we ask. You do see it when you look at some of the open-ended questions, but we were specifically trying to focus on what are those budget areas for Mecklenburg County and try to put it into specific decisions.
Thank you.
Knowing that education is going to be a top priority.
Thank you. And colleagues, I'm going to ask for a little bit more grace here because I've got two other things. One is, a few years ago, when Dr. Allen was still here, and again, I love all the tools that we use and the data that we collect, one of the things that I asked about was, it's called a well-being index. And really what that is, it measures more of a happiness score. So, right, so you can use that as a tool to overlay on top of the hard quantitative data. And so for instance, it may drill down to respondents around affordable housing. It'll take that question, but it might say, on a scale of one, zero to 100, how do you actually feel about your housing situation? So you could tell if someone, it'll measure if someone is depressed or, you know, where they are on this happiness index, to be able to really tell us how our residents, how these issues make our residents feel, like where they are. And it's called a happiness index or a well-being index, but there are communities globally that use that as an overlay on their other survey tools to drill deeper in, I guess for lack of a better word, a more qualitative impact. And the University of Vermont was the one that developed that. So I'm lifting that back up.
Definitely. We'll take a look at that again. I know that we've asked some similar questions in the past, and, you know, to your point, there's the perceptions of things and the feelings, and then there's the need, right? And so balancing on the survey of trying to, how do we measure perceptions of need versus actual deed of individuals? So that's something we'll definitely take into consideration moving forward.
No, I definitely appreciate that. And you know what? We'll end right there.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was excellent.
Well, thank you, Carly. The job is all available. We appreciate you. Mr. Chair, those are all of our important questions.
Okay, fantastic. So we'll move to the last agenda item, which is commissioner reports. We'll go with the three minutes, and we'll start with Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No report.
Commissioner Powell.
So I decided to add my other comments from the last presentation till now. So I like when you, when Commissioner Altman said, or whoever said it, to, you know, tie it in with our top priorities, but also tie it in with our top priorities where we have authority, because there's some things we have zero authority over. I get lots of phone calls about things like that. And I love your idea about the well-being index. I think it's a big part of health and wellness, so I love that. When Commissioner Altman asked a question about the surprise about the drinking water, I'm glad you asked it because, and I'm glad to see it's number one, because there are so many threats upon the fact that, you know, how do we keep having safe drinking water when there are so many threats on our water system and water supply? And so, you know, like when you look down from space, we're the blue planet. Without the water, we don't have life. And so it makes sense that people would be the most concerned with that. With environmental stewardship being the top priority of the board, I was thinking, like, I don't know how the, I didn't get this survey, so I don't know how the questions were posed, and I'd like to be involved in the future somehow, but there are so many things that aren't on here. You know, like I was thinking, wow, what Commissioner Leake was talking, growth, you know, the growth of the population is a big threat to the environment. So, you know, like I was thinking, how would I rate these, like, you know, green and open space impact the water quality and the air quality? The amount of impervious impacts that. So, I mean, these would all be questions I had, you know, are you concerned about all the impervious? Are you consider, like on waste and litter, are you concerned about recycling infrastructure? Health of our creeks, the loss of tree canopy, the urban heat danger, deforestation, the loss of natural ecosystems, the ultimate resilience of Mecklenburg County? Like, how will we fare 20 years from now if we aren't paying attention to these? There's so many questions that I think would be good to ask because I don't know if people are thinking about them. You don't think about what it would be like until you're in a swift water rescue about the flood risk. It's real when you see how much impervious we have here. So I was thinking all these things, and I loved it when Adrienne said, bubble up. All these thoughts were bubbling up while, and I was writing them all down, but I have lots more thoughts. And then I have a deep concern about, from the federal level, they've decreased the minimum staffing requirements for our nursing homes. So to be continued.
Finish your talk.
I'm very concerned about, it's already concerning before the minimum standards were decreased. So now there are, I mean, I just, I can't speak to, like, I feel like of all the things that are happening, that the people in nursing homes are in the most in danger of what's happening from the federal level down. Like, it's already worse than jail. And I'm getting these phone calls from people that are sobbing about the understaffing in our nursing homes in Mecklenburg County. And the private equity firms are benefiting while people are living in substandard conditions. And so how do we work together, we have to work together to form some kind of voice at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to do better because the state has authority, you know, significant amount of authority? And how do we work with them to do better because it cannot continue like this? It's criminal. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin.
Just two comments. One, as one of your two representatives on Alliance Board, I'm going to get with the manager and his team to draft something to get an answer to the question, is what's our return on investment or rebate that comes back into Mecklenburg County? The second observation, as we talk about the managed care programs that Medicaid has divided into five different managed care organizations, the purpose of that is to save the state money, and those organizations actually make money at the end of the year. And so more dollars could go into client services, but there are efforts to try to save money, and I think that compounds the challenge that all counties have because it's really a for-profit organization that's operating as a nonprofit organization, and those critical dollars, when you say professionals only get $100 per session, Dr. Penn versus costs $200 to deliver the services, you might be able to go up to $150 or something. So, you know, I think we ought to figure out somehow or another to lobby, negotiate, sit with, eat dinner, et cetera, to see if we can figure out a different formula that might be able to get a few more dollars that gets out into clients' hands. So that's all I have to offer, but I will try to get something out and back to all the members of the board in terms of what's the return on investment from Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Commissioner Leake.
Let me first say thank you for the opportunity. Mental health and behavioral health are in concert with each other, so we cannot separate one without the other and knowing more about it. The other piece is that we did not include the senior citizens repair process on this forum, and many of those forums have been turned in. Now, talk with the manager about some means of communicating immediately, if possible, with our seniors who have sent in their letters stating that they need certain items completed with their homes, windows, steps, and other items that would make life just a little bit better. If we look outside and remember how it was when we came in today, it's very cold, but for one, not to have the appropriate heating and appropriate support is important for all of us as it relates to taking care of those who cannot take care of themselves. And my last comment, let us not forget that with growth comes major economic, physical problems in this community, and crime is a major problem in Mecklenburg County with young black males, and we must make sure that we find some way to correct this problem. Chairperson was awarded an outstanding medal on the weekend. I don't know why we didn't know about it so we could attend. So we want to congratulate him this afternoon, being out front, taking the lead, and making us look good when we can't be there as a group. So thank you for your leadership and all that you do to make the county look excellent and feel good about its accomplishment for all of us, and especially our county manager. I can't say enough about him. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, I'm speaking to you and about your caring about this community and thanking you for taking each of us to our own respective communities to see what we have and what we have to deal with, and how we're making a change in the living of our people in Mecklenburg County. So to you and your staff and to our manager, our chairperson, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
God bless you and your family.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Everything Commissioner Powell said, and if they, if the people saw the map that you shared at our retreat, that would be at the top of their list, is green space. So thank you for that, and happy birthday, Commissioner Rodriguez-Mattel.
Commissioner Rodriguez-Mattel.
Thank you. So I really want to co-sign on everything that Commissioner Griffin said about, you know, really, this idea that they've been reforming the mental and behavioral health, you know, the LME, MCOs and all that stuff for, you know, I don't know, 20 years or something. It's all because they're trying to save money. It's all about that, and it's not trying to save money to pour it back in to the system to make it better. That's not what it's about. And so I just, whether you're talking about, you know, the LME/MCO system and mental health, or you're talking about the nursing homes, where they're lowering standards, if you talk about our courts and public safety, all of those areas, our state is just failing, okay? And I just read something the other day that Speaker Hall has this new thing where he's focusing on property taxes, and he's doing some kind of committee on property taxes, and I shudder to think what's coming, okay? And then, just so that I'm not all completely doom and gloom on my birthday, I want to shout out the, I was at Matthews Town Hall last night, they're turning over a whole bunch of new public servants there with their town manager and four new town commissioners. And so congratulations to all of them, and many thanks to all those who are stepping away from leadership. Tonight I'll be in Pineville to be there for our very first Pineville female mayor being sworn in, and some new leadership there as well. And then on Thursday night, Mint Hill will be doing a new, they'll be swearing in a new mayor as well. So I just want to say thank you to all those who have been serving and who are ending their service now, and those who will be beginning. And last but not least, I should also shout out CMS, who's also having a number of new folks sworn in tonight. So it's just a lot of change, but hopefully we can all work together to keep on trying to get the best for the people of Mecklenburg County. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Commissioner Altman.
Thank you. Well, I want to say that last Thursday, Commissioner Leake and I spent the day together at VCW working on the Teca CG Rec Center Construction Manager at Risk interviews with staff, and we had a big time, and it was really wonderful. It was wonderful. We really appreciate the collaboration with our colleagues in the manager's office and doing that exciting work. And then the other thing I wanted to use my time for was to ask if the subject matter experts in the room, like Dr. Campbell, could in any way tell us, and I know I didn't prepare you for this, so don't worry if you can't, but, you know, I really am interested in understanding the population and the funding for state psychiatric hospitals now versus over time, because like I say, this is someone who had a family member who was in a state psychiatric hospital for quite a long time, and it was really necessary, and it was the only option. It was another state, and it really helped, but it required something with that level of heft to help bring a very difficult situation under control. And do you, you know, does anybody in the room, can anyone speak to that need? Does it, you know, are they basically just emptied out, that resource doesn't exist? Or what's the waitlist if somebody needs that level of care that, you know, a family member can't provide? Are you able to speak to that?
A little bit. I can speak to it specifically from the child and adolescent standpoint. We, it often takes years to get into a psych, I'm sorry, the waitlist can be a year for a psychiatric hospital for a child. So I don't know what the waitlist look like for adults. I can definitely explore that, but part of what has happened is hospitals have closed, and so I don't believe we have the number of hospitals that we would have had, say, in 1975. And so as a result, there's just not as much access to state psychiatric hospital beds. And as you said, your loved one was there for years, and so one person can only come in when one person leaves.
Right. Like, understanding the change in funding with that and the, you know, if you do that one sheet, it might be a good thing to lay out, like the basic non-funding of state hospitals, and it would be good to lay out the enormous gap for innovation waivers, if I'm saying it right. So people who can't support them- So people who can't support, or who can't get their needs met in the community, their mental health needs met. I think there's like a waitlist of 16,000 people. It's like multiple years. I'm not saying it right. All of that is probably pretty incorrect, but if that could be another data point, I think we should help raise, you know, understanding of that.
Right on time. Few comments to Commissioner Leek's point. Thank you so much. The award that I did receive was a complete surprise. The folks had me come there. I was thinking I was going to support, and most of y'all know SY Mason-Watson, getting sworn in for African-American caucus. And so it was a surprise, so I had no clue about it. But that's why I wanted to speak to, why you all didn't know. The other thing is, I want to shout out a couple of different events that we've had over the last few weeks. The Thanksgiving turkey giveaway, Mr. Manager and our amazing team, we gave away 1,000 turkeys for Thanksgiving. And it was, it just, it, well, hold on, hold on one second, Commissioner Leek, I'm sorry. It was just an amazing, amazing event to be out at the Ella B. Scarborough Center and watching the community come by. And bless you. And they were just so appreciative, and it was, what department was it, Mr. Manager?
Department of Community Resources.
Yes.
Yolanda Griffin.
And...
I didn't hear.
Department of Community Resources. Yolanda Griffin, who's the department head for that department, she and her team coordinated that effort.
Excellent. That's great. I just got it.
So the point that I was trying to make was, I just definitely wanted to shout that team out. And it was just, I mean, manager was there, and everybody was on deck. And to everyone that was involved, I want to just say thank you very much because it was, it was phenomenal. We had not done that since I've been here that I remember, and a thousand. So wanted to lift that up. The other thing was, earlier this week, we, or I think it was yesterday or Friday, days are getting mixed up, we did the refresh, we did the ribbon cutting for the refresh of Albemarle Road Park. And that was one of the first projects that I advocated for, getting on the, when first got on the board. And thank you to all of you all as colleagues, because we were able to raise the amount of the refresh to close to $1 million, which really had an impact on the community. And we were able to send a message that said, no matter if it's the largest park in our inventory, or a, more of a community park, we care about every community. And I just wanted to let you all know and just say thank you so much. Our staff did an amazing job there as well. And then the final thing that I wanted to lift up, and I'm going to piggyback on you, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, just a little bit, because the presentation that we received from Dr. Penn, there's a few things that I would like to underscore. The, the elements that we're dealing with have a cascading impact on multiple levels. And what I mean by that, it goes beyond just the service delivery, which is critical, and it's very important. But when you think about the impact on the small businesses and the providers, being, rates being cut, already minuscule rates, but then they're being cut anywhere between 3% and 10%, depending on what type of provider you are. If, and those, a lot of those providers that are being impacted the most are the ones who have decided to lean in, in that area, to say, "We will service Medicaid clients." We will take that population and deliver a high-quality care. And so when you think about it from a small business perspective, those companies have to make some very critical decisions, not just around the delivery of service. They've got to make up that revenue loss, number one, because expenses are fixed. So they're forced to, as you know, Commissioner Powell, very well, you have to let go of employees and team members that get impacted because they can't be absorbed back into the system because everybody's dealing with these rate cuts. Hey? So then there's a, you know, a cascading impact on the burden that it creates at the local level. And so, you know, these small businesses are trying to find ways to make up that difference. And 3% to 10% really can impact small margins. So I just want us to really think about, even beyond the folks that need the service, the lack of support from, you know, our, the folks in Raleigh creates increased burden on us locally in different ways. And so this idea of saving money is really costing us money. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And then the final thing, as we are approaching the holiday season, let's just all be mindful of, you know, people that are, you know, within the, within the county, that it's not necessarily happy holidays, but I think we're all doing everything that we can to make it as happy as possible. So thank you all for your work, our amazing staff. Thank you all for your work. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.